Good evening. I'm going to call the Harkin County Board of Education meeting to order. If everyone would please stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Bland, do you have our board commitments?
To approve our effectiveness, the Harkin County Board of Education commits to keep children first, to listen, to be prepared, to be professional, to demonstrate financial stewardship, to represent the entire district and support district goals, and to support board decisions.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Wise couldn't be with us here tonight, so I get to be in the big chair for the evening. I would like to thank everyone for attending our meeting tonight. As we've seen in recent weeks, community members have come to local Board of Education meetings to share thoughts about COVID-19 guidelines. And if that is what you're here to do tonight, please know that your voice will be heard. We also will share the mandates by the Kentucky Board of Education, or the governor will not be overturned by this board or our superintendent. These mandates are law and will be treated as such. If you choose to share your concerns with the board, there are guidelines in the Board of Education Visitor's Guide that you should have obtained when you signed in to speak this evening. We will follow those guidelines this evening. We've got a few more steps before we get to speakers, but I want to go ahead and give everybody an opportunity to know the steps that need to take place before we get there so that everybody that wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. I would like to point out a few of the guidelines. Only those who have signed in to speak to the board will do so during board meetings. The sign-in sheet will be brought to me at item six on the agenda, which is recognition of visitors. Please limit all comments to between three and five minutes or less. I will recognize those speakers who signed up before we get to the recognition of visitors item on the agenda. Anyone who calls out from the crowd could be asked to leave the meeting. Please state the facts of your concern. Comments that result in personal attacks against any individual, program, or school are not acceptable and will not be tolerated during meetings. When it is your turn to speak, please go to the podium. Please state your name, the community in which you reside, and your concern. There will not be a discussion with the board regarding your concern. We will listen and will take note of it. However, the board will not answer questions or engage in conversation with you regarding any topic, as has been our policy in the past. We appreciate you taking the time to be here. We all share a common interest, the students of Harkin County schools. And with that, Mr. Wright, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. If you have a resolution in front of you, it is the Resolution of Recognition for our HCS Stronger Together Award winners. So if you'll read and pass that resolution, Madam Chair, we'll get started.
I move that we approve the resolution as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. We asked several people to come to be recognized this evening, and they called me as we got closer to the meeting and said they could not be here. So this first group of young ladies, which are student HCS Stronger Together Award winners, they are actually all on the North Harkin High School volleyball team, and they are playing tonight on the road. But we still wanted to recognize them. They are Kelsey Atkins, who's a 10th grader, Ryan Fay, which is a 10th grader, Madison Hunley, a 10th grader, and Jocelyn Crutcher, who's an 11th grader at North Harkin High School. These students gave several hours over several days of summer sorting cards with sight words for kindergarten and preschool students. Their selfless donation of time and talent helped educators in elementary schools all across the district. They worked hard and were dedicated to the task until it was finished. So we'd like to thank Kelsey, Ryan, Madison, and Jocelyn. Even though they're not here, I'd like to give them a round of applause if we could. And I'll save our staff, Stronger Together Award winner, and we'll do that in just a second, but if we can move on to our community Stronger Together Award winner, and that is the Erin and Melissa Miller family. Erin and Melissa are farmers in our community, and so they are representing their profession at the state fair, which opened today. So the Miller family of Elizabeth Town has earned this month's HCS Stronger Together Award. Creekside Elementary School, Ms. Custis is here, principal at Creekside, they have started an AgStream program at Creekside in its curriculum. Its focus is to help students realize the power of agriculture and the many careers that it provides. Creekside lays on a community dominated by farms and those who make a living in agriculture. Melissa Miller is the executive director of the Kentucky 4-H Foundation, and she has been critical to AgStream initiatives at Creekside since the program's inception. She has connected the school with many state and local resources. She and her family facilitated a professional development day at Sawmill Farms and Fresh Start Farms with a lunch that was provided by the Harkin County Farm Bureau. It also included a Q&amp;A session with local farmers. The Miller family's dedication will help ensure students continue to thrive in agriculture-based learning at Creekside Elementary School. So, thank you. I know Ms. Custis appreciates them receiving this award, so thank you to the Miller family. Let's give them a hand, please.
Ms. Custis, would you want to come forward and get those so they can pick them up at your school?
Judge Bland, the Miller family's plaque is right, it's in that stack somewhere. It should be, yes, sir, right there. Sure. Yeah, let's do theirs. Okay, the next one is a surprise. This person does not know that they are getting the award, but we're getting ready to spill the beans here in half a second. So Janay Sutton, please go forward. Janay Sutton is the Harkin County Schools Director of Family Resource and Youth Service Centers and Health Services. On March 13, 2020, the trajectory of the district was changed when we were forced to begin non-traditional instruction in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Mrs. Sutton immediately began work to organize contact tracing across the district, social distancing protocols, and deep cleaning regimens. She got in administrators, principals, directors, and ultimately all staff and students through unprecedented times. She went above and beyond in state reporting efforts. Her work as a liaison to the Lincoln Trail District Health Department, Baptist Health Harden, and the Healthy Kids Clinic has been absolutely remarkable. Mrs. Sutton's steadfast guidance, direction, and dedication are appreciated each day, especially as the pandemic stages a resurgence. She is certainly an MVP on the HCS team. Congratulations. And Mrs. Sutton, that was Mrs. Morgan's idea. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next, we have focus on academics. Mr. Sutton.
Just want to talk about a little bit of, you know, HCS success. I think a lot of organizations are, a lot of times judged, whether you're a football team, a business, any organization, hospital, how you work through adversity. And there's no doubt that we went through a lot of adversity the last 18 months, our nation, and we try to keep moving forward for our kids, and that's what this is all about. Me being a parent, know how important that is of two graduates, one during the pandemic and then now in college. So, want to focus on success of this last school year and give you guys some data about what we've been doing in Harkin County schools. First thing I wanted you all to see up there is highlighting yellow the fact that we have increased the 38 pathways for our students here in Harkin County schools. Probably wouldn't guess that any other district in the state could have as many opportunities for our kids as us. And two of the programs that we added last year, one being residential maintenance, started off with 20 students. John, can you hit that Facebook page real quick there, right next to it? We started out actually with 20 students last year in residential maintenance. This right here is the first block, second block, and third block class this trimester. We're expected to have 114 kids working on HVAC, plumbing, electric, and other skill trades out there in Harkin County and working on co-op opportunities. We've got 168 students now in our law enforcement pathway, working through the criminal justice pathway. We just ordered a new simulator to work with our local police officers and to collaborate with them on training opportunities. So, very excited about our growth of these programs, what we're offering for kids, and that's a huge success for us in the last year. And we started that during the '21 school year, and we're following right now the '21-'22. Another big thing for up there on number two, we have 121 seniors and 92 juniors in our early college academy over there at EC3 and ECTC. They're working toward their associate's degree and over 6,000 college credits earned with the overall GPA of a 3.5. We have some impressive students here in Harkin County schools. Number three, some people don't realize that we do, we have actually 11 social work interns that we work collaboratively with through our Family Resource Centers. Mr. Rudy Garcia, our student support specialist, actually mentors those social work people here in our district. He does a great job with that. We actually had 25 students last school year qualify for the Governor's Scholar Program, got to go to the five-week program this year, either Northern Kentucky, Bellarmine, or Center College. We're going to continue to push that program because that creates scholarship opportunities for our students. Critical program that I would encourage your students to look into toward their junior year, preparing for their senior year. Great program. Central Harkin High School just received a $50,000 grant for this school year to mentor students, specifically minority students, through the teaching and learning pathway. That's another pathway we've created for our students, which is going to be outstanding. 207 students last year. Obviously, we had to create some unique learning opportunities for kids in order to graduate. 207 of our students graduated through the Harkin County High Program, and greatly appreciate the work that Wes Blair did to make that happen. Two high school students last year. One at Central Harkin passed the biology practice test, the test for the content area to become a future teacher, and one from John Harkin that passed the math practice test. So it has a five-year shelf life, and if they want to go to college and get their teaching certification, they can come back here and teach for us. They've already passed the exam. That was another huge success. We got all K through 2 teachers worked on, and sped teachers worked on multi-century strategies for Orton Gillingham. That is our foundational school program we now have in all of our schools, all 12 of our elementary schools. We're very proud of that, actually 13 with North Park. And then probably the next thing toward the end of the year, our Destination Acceleration right there on number nine, we had over 2,000 students that participated in our summer programs. They came up, about 563 half credits were earned throughout the summer, had about, how many staff members there? My eyes are going bad here. 395 HCS employees and volunteers working with kids this summer so we could provide opportunities. Greatly appreciate the work they put in this summer for our kids. We have our one-to-one technology initiative rolling out this year where every student will have access to a Chromebook, at least in grades 3 through 12, for sure, is where we're at with that. North Middle School, they're thinking outside the box. They're actually going to trimesters like high schools. They're creating some unique elective opportunities for their related arts students, trying to make learning fun again. We know that's what we got to get back to, and we're trying to look at some unique ways to look at our schedules to make that happen. Thank you, North Middle, for thinking outside the box. And John, if you notice, a few more. Project-based learning. Got Bluegrass Middle School, doing a lot of training through the project-based learning process. They started with their sixth-grade teachers this year, and that's going to be a three-year process where it goes through the entire school. Appreciate the work of Toni Jury, the principal there, and Kristen Swords, our new middle school director, to make that happen. If you haven't heard yet, Kristy Wright, our counselor at EC3, she just got named the Kentucky Counselor of the Year. She's a counselor that services all three of our high schools through EC3, and all those students that have success through the Early College Career Center, she works directly with those kids. Without her, that would not happen. So congratulations to Kristy Wright. We're going to feature our next segment on HCC TV, Impacting Learning, Empowering Students. And last but not least, as of today, we had just right there at 14,000 students in our schools, and that's right on about average of what we would see on any normal year. So greatly appreciate our parents encouraging our students to come to school so we have the opportunity to teach and do these great things. I can't say thank you enough as a parent and as a chief academic officer. So, thank you all, Board of Education, for allowing us to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always good to hear all the great things that are going on in Harkin County. Takes us to recognition of visitors. Looks like we have about 13 people signed up in addition to some of the guidelines that I discussed earlier. We'll probably try and keep to about a three-minute count with each of those. And also, we would ask that if people in front of you have said essentially the same thing, to try and keep from just repeating the same thing over and over again, okay? And the first speaker we have is Katie Keery.
My name is Katie Keery, Vice Chair for Moms for Liberty, Harkin County Chapter, and Mom to Three. I have one child in Harkin County Schools and one that we pulled from Central this week. She is a senior this year. We pulled her because she is masked 45 hours a week, and that is simply too much. She will be homeschooling through Liberty University while this 270-day mask mandate continues. She will be my second child to complete her senior year through COVID. What a disservice we have done to our children and continue to do each day. I would like to personally thank Ben Zego for answering my emails and being transparent and honest with me. In a world where copy and paste is usually the answers to tough questions, I appreciate how he handles emails. So thank you, Ben Zego. I would also like to thank the superintendent and the school board for sending our East kids back in a building. The kids needed that, and I say thank you. Through my research and questions asked, it appears that the masking is being implemented not only because Katie ordered it, but because it is to keep students and teachers out of quarantine so that in-person school can resume. Obviously, not right now, but it would be awesome. I'm not sure exactly where to look for the disclosed data that was used to show that, so I'm interested in that, and I will send you an email. Were kids not masked all last year and quarantined? Is this the new standard for Kentucky public schools? Mr. Zego's words, "Were masking means the Kentucky Department of Education and the Lincoln Trail Health Department won't place as many students and staff in quarantine." We now have changed from being worried about illness to worrying about quarantine issues. It's a real issue, but is anybody concerned we've moved from worrying about illness to quarantine? My experience with quarantine has been healthy people are put in it, rarely catch it, bide their time, take a test, and get out of quarantine jail. To the school board, I just ask, where does it end? When do we stand as a community together, teachers, students, parents, Board of Education, superintendents, and say enough is enough? Where do we stop the government overreach? Allow those to wear masks by choice. If we all do it, we all stand, we can make a difference. A couple of questions I have that I'm going to present to you that I do not need answers and will send an email about is, one, is mask choice ever Harkin County Schools' end goal? Two, how does the Board of Education intend to advocate for the voice of parents who choose mask choice? Not anti-mask, but mask choice. Three, will you pass a school plan for COVID using HB1? If so, would you stand by your plan if it was met with resistance? There's a lawyer working on some stuff, so there's some information I want to send you guys that I think is new today, that's just something to consider. And would you commit to wearing a mask the same amount of time that our children do with the same amount of breaks they do? They don't have offices, and they don't have these other places where they can do it, and I just think it might help us really feel their pain. Some solutions I have to be considered while we are in the process of figuring out things is please vote to allow our kids to go outside when their teaching is done. I know that they don't teach the exact whole time that the class period is. It'd be awesome if when they're done and they have the ability to do their work at home, that maybe they could get some outside time. I know that requires a teacher and extra things, but it's just a suggestion. And my other thing is to allow the kids to eat a snack here or there so that they can pull down their mask and have a snack for a desk break. The public school as we used to know it has changed, and I am not sure we will ever know the same public school. I do know this, though. Never-ending masking cannot continue. Quarantining well, children and teachers cannot continue. We need good leaders to stand for our children. I believe you are all good people, but good people must take a stand. Please stand for the government overreach to end. Stand for liberty. We will stand with you. And the quiet ones who are letting others do the work, I believe they will stand as well when we all stand together. I have a lady who did not want to stay because she did not want to wear a mask. Here are her comments. Will anyone take them?
Our next speaker is Jenny Bowman.
Good evening and hello again. My name is Jenny Bowman. I am the Chair of the Harkin County Kentucky Chapter of Moms for Liberty, and I am here once again as a concerned parent who believes in freedom. The great thing is, I think you all believe in freedom as well. So I want to talk about freedom and remind you all what freedom looks like. I want to remind you by quoting some of our great founding fathers. John Adams, "But a constitution of government, once changed from freedom, can never be restored. Liberty, once lost, is lost forever." John Adams, "If men through fear, fraud, or mistake should in terms renounce and give up any essential natural right, the eternal law or reason and the great end of society would absolutely vacate such renunciation. The right to freedom, being the gift of God Almighty, it is not in the power of man to alienate this gift and voluntarily become a slave." Thomas Paine, "Those who expect to reap the blessings of freedom must, like men, undergo the fatigues of supporting it." Thomas Jefferson, "I predict future happiness for Americans if they can prevent the government from wasting the labors of the people under the pretense of taking care of them." Benjamin Franklin, "Any society that would give up a little liberty to gain a little security will deserve neither and lose both." And two more quotes I'd like to share. Former President Ronald Reagan, "The nine most terrifying words in the English language are: I'm from the government and I'm here to help." And Senator Rand Paul, "We should never forget, the Constitution wasn't written to restrain citizens' behavior. It was written to restrain the government's behavior." We pledge allegiance to the flag before each meeting. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are a nation, under God. Now the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom. We are a nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Stand fast, therefore, in the liberty wherewith Christ has made us free." I am here tonight to encourage you all to listen as we advocate for parental rights in the public school system. You have the freedom to choose whether or not you allow us to choose what is best for our children. Oh, wait a minute. That freedom has been taken away from you as well. It is my understanding that you are under the authority of the Kentucky Department of Education and the Kentucky Board of Education, who at first were going to let you choose whether to mandate masks, but enough districts didn't do what they wanted done, so they silenced districts and just decided for all districts what was going to be done. They didn't listen to the majority of district superintendents and board members. Freedom slowly goes away. It's my understanding that you are now under the authority of the Health Department, a system that was not elected by the people. They threaten that if children don't wear those masks, there will be so much quarantine going on that schools will have to shut down. Freedom slowly goes away. I believe each parent should be able to make the choice for their own children as to whether or not they wear a mask. If a parent believes a mask works for their child, they should have the freedom to choose that route for their child. If a parent believes that a mask does not work for their child, they should have the freedom to let their child breathe freely. It's called parent choice. It's called freedom. I'd like to close by reminding you how happy you all were at the last board meeting about returning to school with no masks and being able to see each other's faces. And as you sit there with your masks on once again, let me also remind you of the quote by John Adams, "Liberty, once lost, is lost forever." Looks like Mr. Adams was right after all. So I simply ask tonight that you stand for freedom. Can you imagine what would happen if those superintendents and board members that know in their hearts that this whole situation is government overreach, the likes of which we have never seen, and they decided to stand up and say enough? Can you imagine what standing for freedom would look like? If enough of you banded together and took a stand, it could change the face of public education. And wouldn't it be freeing to see faces again? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Next, we have Lydia Keery.
My name is Lydia. I'm a student from Harkin County Schools in the eighth grade. I'm here today to share my concerns about the masks. First of all, I wanted to point out that we are being masked seven hours a day, five days a week, for the COVID-19 Delta variant. There have been a total of zero deaths from ages zero to 19 from coronavirus. I also find it weird that we are forced to wear masks all times except lunch, but teachers seem to be allowed to take a break whenever needed. However, if I take off my mask in class simply to breathe, it's considered a dress code offense, which I personally find unfair. I constantly hear students expressing how they feel about masks and how they find it very difficult to breathe. So I'm asking you to advocate for us. I am asking the Board of Education to advocate for the 270-day mandate to be removed because this country stands for freedom and being forced to wear a mask is not free. I'm requesting you implement a mask and move policy. Thanks. So while seated, we can take off our mask, just as teachers do. You happily put the burden of masks on children. Children are not at high risk. My mother called the Lincoln Health, Lincoln Trail Health Department. There are zero kids dying of COVID from ages zero to 19. So remind me why I'm wearing a mask. I'm not sick, and I do not want to wear a mask. If you believe masks should be a choice, stand up for freedom. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Brooke French.
Good evening. My name is Brooke French, and I'm here as a concerned mother. I saw on July 30, 2021, Harkin County Schools newly released guidelines in which COVID testing was going to be required every 14 days for all students who are not vaccinated and are involved in extracurricular activities. It was later put on that this was an error, but I am concerned it is still on the table. I'm opposed to a test-to-play system. This would be singling out my child for not being vaccinated with an emergency authorized experimental vaccine. A child who is not sick and experiencing symptoms should not be getting COVID tested. It should never be sick until proven healthy. There are no benefits to my child in testing him for a virus when he is not sick, but there are possible side effects ranging from mild to serious, and the tests are often inaccurate. If the statement by Harkin County Schools was truly set in error, good. Just know, if Harkin County tries to make it come into play, there will be issues with myself and other parents. We don't consent to healthy children being singled out and tested. Another concern I wish to voice is over the masking of my children. Last year, I had to purchase masks for my children to wear to be able to attend school. When they arrived, they said non-medical fashion masks. It felt wrong to have to send them in masks. That is, Dr. Anthony Fauci stated in March of 2020, "When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little better, and it may block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think that it is." Kids are being forced to wear masks so that others may feel safe and protected, even if that perceived protection is false. To quote Dr. Simone Gold, "The poor size of cloth face coverings range from 20 to 100 microns. The COVID virus is 200 to 1,000 times smaller than that at 0.1 microns. Putting up a chain link fence will not keep out a mosquito. Even the most esteemed medical journals admit their purpose is to calm anxiety. Expanded masking protocols' greatest contribution may be to reduce the transmission of anxiety. Studies have shown no difference between masked and unmasked schools, and every adult has had the opportunity to be vaccinated if they wish. Considering COVID is overwhelmingly mild in children who do contract it, I can only conclude we are forcing kids to mask to give adults a false sense of security. Furthermore, masks can be harmful to children. I am concerned about things like bacterial pneumonia that can result from prolonged mask-wearing, mouth deformity, facial elongation, psychological harm, and early childhood development, to name a few. I also worry about the mental toll of the fear-mongering and propaganda children face daily. The mask is a visual reminder to be afraid of a virus, that if and when they do contract it, they have over a 99.99% chance of being okay. As of July 29, according to American Academy of Pediatrics, COVID in children, there had been 296 deaths in the USA among children due to COVID. All had serious comorbidities such as leukemia or morbid obesity. COVID is not coming for our children, but I'm afraid something far worse is if we, as a community, don't stand up and push back against what is being done to our children. Medical freedom isn't a central right. Parents should always have the right to choose what we feel is best for our child. This is especially true when the science is not settled. In conclusion, I ask that going forward, that parents be given the right to choose in all areas what is best for their child when it comes to masking up and COVID testing. I'm asking for parental choice. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Dolly Gunther.
Good evening. I have a document from the Children's Health Defense website revised dated July 14, 2021, in support of not wearing the mask, and it states, "This serves as notice that the mandate for..." "This serves as notice that the mandate for any individual to wear a mask against COVID-19 as a condition of employment or attendance at a university or other institution violates federal law. All COVID-19 masks, whether surgical, N95, or other respirators, are authorized under an emergency use authorization only. They are not approved or licensed by the federal government. EUA products are by definition experimental and thus require the right to refuse." The FDA wrote a letter dated April 24, 2020, to the manufacturer of face masks. On page five, it states that authorized face masks must be labeled accurately and may not be labeled in a way that misrepresents the product's intended use as[654.56][654.84]"source control to help prevent the spread of COVID. Labeling may not state or imply that the product is intended for antimicrobial or antiviral protection or for the use as infection prevention or reduction." You need to be asking our governor why he has not asked President Biden and Dr. Fauci the following. Why is our federal government not stopping people with COVID to come across the border? Why is Dr. Fauci still pushing for masks when the FDA later, letter dated April 24, face masks cannot be labeled as a "source control to help prevent the spread of COVID or for antimicrobial or viral protection or infection prevention?" And number three, why do hospitals get thousands of dollars for patients they label as COVID? USA Today reported on April 24, 2020, "A COVID patient gets $13,000." For a patient on a ventilator, it goes up to $39,000. You as a board members have more pull than the average citizens to get these questions answered in Frankfurt. We wouldn't need a mask mandate if hospitals were not getting back big bucks for everything labeled COVID. Most of you are parents, and some of you are grandparents. I'm sorry I'm asking you to ask the tough questions to our governor, but we, the people, and that includes all of you and your children, do not have time to be nice any longer. I worked in our local government for over 20 years, and I saw firsthand, no one wants to ask the tough questions, and we must find our backbone for our children in these difficult days. I want to state clearly, we do not need violence. We need tough questions asked, and we need tough questions answered for all our freedoms. Thank you.
Then we have Jennifer Black.
My name's Jennifer Black. I'm from Glendale. My husband and I have four children who have attended school in Hardin County since 2008. Our children range from a senior to a kindergartner. My kindergartner was placed in quarantine today because of contact tracing. We chose to keep our kids in Hardin County because it's a community that cares about its children and families. I truly believe that. However, I'm now questioning that decision based on the responses that we're getting from asking our children. I want to know how my kindergartner, who has an articulation speech delay, is supposed to learn how to read and how to enunciate words when he cannot see his teacher's mouth? How is his speech going to improve when he cannot see to articulate the sound? My kids can take their masks off while eating and playing outside with their friends, even touching and hugging their friends, but they cannot take their mask off in order to actually learn in the classroom. Makes zero sense. This virus doesn't just go away when you're eating or you're playing outside. Parents need the choice to mask or unmask their children. I'm not against the mask for those people who want to wear them, but I am for people having the freedom to choose if they or their children wear a mask. I'm here to urge the school board to allow no disciplinary action towards students who do not wear a mask. The long-term effects of masks to adults, let alone children, is unknown. We're teaching our children to be afraid. They're afraid of each other. They're afraid of the world. They're afraid of the air, this virus, and they're even afraid of the air they breathe. Living in fear causes long-term effects, most of which is terror. Terror causes trauma. We're raising these children, our world's future, to be traumatized. This psychological damage is irreversible. Dr. Fauci has actually been quoted as saying, "We hope there's no long-term effects on children." There are thousands of doctors out there saying that masks do not control the spread of this virus, that yet they are being censored and shut down. The masks are about compliance, not our children's health. There are no studies showing that the cloth masks made at home or bought in a store can help prevent the spread of any virus. Only medical masks can help the spread of the disease. These masks on our kids can actually cause various other infections, to include RSV, strep throat, bacterial infections, upper respiratory infections, and others. On top of the fact that these kids are complaining of headaches, tiredness, depression, and more. I'm asking the board to decide that if a child cannot wear a mask, needs a mask break, doesn't want to wear a mask, they don't get in trouble. It's a parent's choice, and it's the children's choice. Thank you.
Next is Jacob Clark.
First, I wonder if any of you or the teachers rode to work for an hour this morning in your car in 90-degree heat without a seatbelt or air conditioning, with a mask on, with multiple other people crammed in the vehicle with you? I wonder if you exercised in the heat with a mask on? We're talking to people. We're getting information that some students are even being punished with masks. They're told if you don't do this or that, your mask break will be taken away. They were told they have to walk laps outside with a mask on as punishment. These are being used as punishment. My purpose, there have been plenty of data discussed tonight. My purpose is not that. My purpose tonight is to highlight the issue that we have our local school boards who are copping out and saying that they have no authority and no choice but to follow along with the state mandates, and that is just not so. Recently, our state legislature passed laws which ended and prohibited certain mandates at the state level and prohibited any funding for their endorsement. HB1, you're familiar with. HR77, maybe you're not familiar with, but HB192 actually forbade any state resources to be used to fund the enforcement of these mandates. Now, the legislature is the body that is elected to represent the will of the people in Frankfurt in concerning lawmaking. In passing this legislation, they demonstrate that it is the overall will of the people of the Commonwealth of Kentucky that such decisions must not be made at the state level. And this would remain true whether it be by the governor or unelected bureaucrats at KDE, KBE, whether it be mask mandates or critical race theory. These decisions must be made at the local level by those on the school board who were elected by the community which they serve. You folks are directly accountable to the people who elect you, and these are the people that you are servants to. That's the terminology used for it, is public servants. It's not a derogatory term. It's something that lots of public servants are proud of, but that sounds all good and well until it's time to stand against something, and then some folks would rather avoid confrontation. And what we need now is not folks who are in a duck-and-cover mode, not folks that will pass the buck up to the state level. What we need now is folks that we have elected on the local level that will stand up against the higher levels for us and make those decisions as even our state legislature demonstrated that the overall will of the people is that these decisions not be made at the state level. If for whatever reason it would be that you folks wouldn't feel like you can stand that fight against the state level, there is things that can be done. You could step out of the way. There could be new school board members elected that would be willing to do those things. I'll end up with a question, and that would be, will you tell us when each of your terms expire? I think we have room full of people and probably folks watching a live stream and folks that would hear about it that would be glad to stand in the place and stand up for the children, even if they're talking about removing board members or maybe even jailing board members or things like that. There are people that are willing to stand up against these things. And you know, the masks, people say the masks aren't that big a deal. The masks aren't that big a deal. And that may be so, but it's a precursor to what might come down the road, you know? We've seen it. You don't have to look back very far in history and see that it's one thing, leads to another, leads to another. And so, you know, I would say that maybe vaccine mandates would be next if they can get people to sit down on this. So I will end now and ask you if you would announce when the terms are up for the school board members before you leave this evening.
Next, we have Cory Romine.
My name is Cory Romine. I stand here before you today as a voice for my third grader and my kindergartner at Lakewood Elementary. You probably find it amusing by this point that I'm standing up here with a mask on that you can see right through. Sure, it may seem like I'm being audacious, but I'm not. I'm making a clear visual presentation of the truth. The truth is, this mask is no worse than the cloth or paper mask that you mandate at stopping COVID, which travels among aerosols of your breath with each exhale when you're infected. Sure, it may stop someone's spit from landing on you when they sneeze, but that virus is still going airborne. If the government really wanted to stop a virus with masks, why was there never an attempt to mass-produce N95 respirators? It is clear that it's not government's real objective to stop the pandemic. And the reason these masks are on our children today is because the United States Constitution and various state constitutions all over the country have slowly struck down the government's ability to control adults. Laws and courts slowly but surely have restrained governments, just as our founding fathers intended. Unfortunately, our founding fathers didn't foresee governors weaponizing school boards or the tyranny that school boards are capable of bringing on our children. So here we are today, parents of our community, to tell you all that this is wrong. Anyone who supports mask mandates and doesn't defend our children from it are psychologically abusing our children. And with what justification? Two deaths under 18 years of age in Kentucky since the pandemic began? Two deaths that are rumored to have come due to comorbidities? Five children died of the flu in Kentucky in 2018. Are masks going to be a forever thing on our children? Absolutely not. We will not stand for this. Just like the Constitution has stopped our government's power abuse, we will slowly and methodically find a way to stop the abuse of our children. I do believe that you all are good people who care for our kids. We are just here to plead with you to stand up to tyranny and give our children's health decisions back to the parents. This virus is here to stay, and my question to you is, when do we learn to live with it? Thank you.
Thank you. McKenna Bullington.
Hi, my name is McKenna Bullington. I live in Reinival, and I'm an eighth grader at James T. Alton Middle School. And I would like to say that I wish we would be able to talk without face masks covering most of our face. I can't hear what most people say, and I find it hard to recognize people I know, even with the masks on. I do not like the mandate because we had to wear masks all day with no mask breaks. I don't like that we can't turn to talk to our classmates when we have to converse or that we have to be as spaced out as we can. CBS 12 News, Lena Salzbank says doctors say after each wear, bacteria from even a healthy wearer's own respiratory droplets collect on the inside of the mask can cause airborne pathogens. Dr. Patrick Grant, who's a microbiologist at FAU, says that you should wear a mask, but be sure to wash it often because fungus and bacteria can accumulate quickly. Dr. Grant also said, "It's very common that we eat and then put our mask back on, and if we are swaying a little bit, it makes a really nice area for bacteria to grow." I personally don't like thinking that face masks can and will build up bacteria and fungi is mandated for everyone every day. And I see most of my classmates with the same face mask on every single day. I also feel like wearing a mask hinders my ability to learn by not being able to connect and fully understand my classmates and teachers. Katie Grimes from Inside Fort Launderyal interviewed a surgeon that has done 10,000 procedures, said, "A 2015 study of cloth masks concluded that they were 97% ineffective in blocking influenza-like viruses, and COVID-19 is smaller than the typical seasonal flu." The doctor also said, "Although surgeons do wear masks to prevent their respiratory droplets from contaminating the surgical field and the exposed tissue, that is about as far as the analogy goes." Obviously, surgeons cannot socially distance from their patients, but the COVID-19 pandemic is all about viral transmission. Surgical and cloth masks do nothing to prevent viral transmission. We should all realize by now that face masks have never been shown to prevent or protect against viral transmission, which is exactly why they have never been recommended for use during the seasonal flu outbreak, epidemics, or previous pandemics. I would like to ask the school board to issue a no-discipline policy for a student who exercises their rights to now wear a mask. Thank you for letting me talk.
Now we have Jenny Bullington.
That was my daughter. As you can imagine, I am a proud mother. My name is Jenny Bullington, and I'm a resident of Reinival, and I am the proud mother of six children, two at JTA, two at Reinival Elementary School, and two waiting to get into the schools. My family and I relocated to Hardin County by choice. We're a military family. My husband is a veteran now, and we chose to live here. We were not PCSD here. We appreciated the values of the people here in Hardin County, and I understand the frustration that you may have encountered when the governor made an illegal mask mandate, putting himself in contempt of court. And now, the KBE and KDE has seemingly tied your hands. However, I implore you to listen to your constituents. You took an oath when you became the people's representatives on our Board of Education. You work for us, and we need you to listen to us. You possess the power to protect our children, my children. I don't want to believe that they are only dollar signs to you because they are my entire world. And I think that we see now that there is a plethora of mama and daddy bears who've woken up and are drawing the line in the sand because this political nonsense, which impedes our children's way of life, needs to stop. I want to ask you to truly do everything you can to listen to us. Please fight for us. You know there's no scientific evidence of masks being effective in the age group that's least impacted by COVID. It starts with mask mandates, but I have to ask, what's next? Are we going to start doing vaccine mandates? I can tell you right now, my middle schoolers are already being pressured by select teachers at JTA to get this experimental, non-FDA-approved vaccine. So when does the erosion of our constitutional liberties end? I believe people who do nothing are going to be complicit in these liberties destruction. Please stand up for the people who put you in those seats. I implore you to enact a no-discipline policy for students who choose to exercise their constitutional rights to have their own health protected, their religion respected, and be sovereign over their own bodies, and say no to masks. You can look at what the superintendent of Marshall and County enacted with a no-discipline policy. I ask you to consider enacting your own HB1 plan. I ask you to please enact a religious exemption plan. I want to leave you with the words of Ronald Reagan because it's a reminder to us all, who we are as Americans, and this dangerous slippery slope upon which we are on the precipice. It looks like some things have changed. Are we doing a good enough job teaching our children what America is and what she represents? Younger parents aren't sure that an appreciation of America is the right thing to teach modern children. I'm warning of an eradication of the American memory that could result in the erosion of the American spirit. If we forget what we did, we don't know who we are, and we've got to do a better job of getting across that America is freedom, and freedom is special and rare. Freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of enterprise. As long as we remember our first principles and believe in ourselves, the future will always be ours. always be ours. Ours was the first revolution in the history of mankind that truly reversed the course of government, and with the three little words, "We the people, and we the people are free." Please allow us, parents, to parent our children, do not take those rights from us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we have Brandon Bullington.
Husband of Jenny Bullington, father of McKenna Bullington, and five other kids who are coming up through the school. We just have only been here for two months. Came from Omaha, Nebraska, veteran. Military didn't bring me down here. I had my heart set on South Dakota. I did, I really did. I was stationed out there, got a lot of friends out there. I like, I like what the governor is doing out there. But Kentucky won. Kentucky won, and we found our forever home. We got some acres. We're happy. I want to keep happy. I think it all boils down to is we, I want to encourage you. I think that you will have a lot of people standing up for you, got your backs if you, if we know that you have ours. I didn't vote for you guys, I wasn't here. But when those terms come up, if you want to stay in this position, what you do now will determine whether you get a vote. Don't take our rights away. Let us have a choice. If our kids don't want to, wear a mask. Don't fault them for that. Had a whole slew of things, should have brought my notes up here. So, but last year, we gave grace for these masks because we, it's so new. It's pretty evident that they don't work, so you got some upset people. Think about next year. If these things, mop suits next, or you know, mop level four suits? Don't even dare talk to me about vaccines mandated. I work for a staffing agency for traveling nurses, and they're going to be mandating those vaccines. There's a whole lot of nurses that are going to be finding other jobs because it's mandated. If you give us the option, you know, what you said, 1,400 students, you want that, those numbers to grow or decline? Because after this year, you're going to have even more angry parents, and your numbers are probably going to drop because we're, we're pretty smart people, and we'll go and find other ways to educate our kids. It's really tough to hear, even I'm sitting in the back, but even with the masks on, it's really tough to hear people talk. And I've got a two-year-old, and I'll end with this. Through the whole pandemic, we stayed home, didn't bring her out. So, my wife took her out to the grocery store for the first time after, what, a year, year and a half or whatever, and she saw all these people with masks on. And she, the whole time in the, in the grocery cart, the whole time, could not look. Imagine what a one, one-and-a-half-year-old seeing just eyeballs and face masks. We're asking you that, to stand up for us. We'll stand up for you. We'll, I mean, we'll take a day and, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll pick it for you. We'll, 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 we'll praise your guys' name on Facebook and all those other sources. Look what this person did. Look what this, you know, the Hardin County schools are awesome. And those counties that are not, that are going to have these mandates, and you guys won't punish the kids, just imagine how much further and how many students you guys would be able to gain. That's it.
Thank you. And finally, we have Paula Gardner.
My background is psychology and social work, and I have an international coaching and consulting business, and I graduated from North Hardin. I have two kids in this district, and during this timeframe, in the short timeframe that they have been there, they have both heard in some way, shape, or form that if their mask isn't way up here, then they are responsible for the lives of other people. This is imperative that you guys inform your staff that that is emotional manipulation and extremely dangerous to the child's mind. It's not okay, and it's not acceptable. You can talk to any ER nurse. I speak on stages all over the world, and I'm nervous right now because it's such a highly charged thing. And I think it's important to understand that all of the statistics, I've also, I've been in finance for 20 years, and I combine the two, stats are easily manipulated. I have many friends who are MDs in the medical profession who have been silenced. That is massive manipulation and a big red flag in and of itself. You can talk to any ER doctor, and I want to make this add in a clear, or nurse, that both the unvaxxed and vaxxed are getting COVID. It doesn't stop the spread. That's a marketing technique. Sales and marketing technique. Everybody, like, like, so, it helps your immunity, like, for now, maybe, like what we're hearing, but the manipulation and that level of weight on a child's mind is absolutely not okay. So if I could invoke you guys to please put out a massive email saying your opinions about this vaccination does not belong in the classroom, and it does not get to be projected onto my children, our children. I also want to speak to you real quick that if these, I'm writing a letter to the pharmaceutical companies, if they actually believed in their science and backed it, they would not have indemnity from this. Meaning this is, as we're all fighting with each other, if it's vaxxed or unvaxxed and blah, 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 it's called the smoke and mirror game. This is a trillions of dollar industry. So if they believed in their science and their product, they would create an earmark of fun for just one, one trillion, put it in a 5% account, I'll happily invest that for them, and it would create a solvent account to help people who are experiencing negative consequences from this inoculation. You can go onto VARs, that is actually happening. There are many people who have talked about reproduction issues. There are many children who have having heart issues. Long-term science isn't here for this vaccination, it's just not. We can take something short-term and propagate it into long-term and say these are the numbers, but the actual science isn't, and data isn't available for 10 years. We've all heard the infomercials of, if your loved one took this product and da-da-da-da-da, please call 1-800-da-da-da-da. I am concerned for the actual well-being of my child, too. Like, I am concerned for the medical, I take good care of myself. Like, if we want to mandate something in schools, let's mandate real food. Let's mandate real healthy things. I am available, I teach yoga and meditation. I am happy to do that for your staff, too, to learn how to deal with our emotions. That's the most important thing about this, is it's triggering everybody's, if you watch headlines, it's triggering everybody's fear of death. Like headlines, as I'm, I'm actually so thankful for this audience because I came in here wondering what I was going to hear. I came in here wondering, and what I'm hearing is what I'm hearing from my friends throughout the world, but what is being mandated isn't actually that. What is on the headlines is marketing itself. It isn't actually that. Yes, this is real, but if we want to talk stats, let's talk all the stats. How many people are surviving? How many people, blah, blah, blah? We've all brought that up. My, my concern today basically was just to make sure that the opinions of this vaccination is being kept out of the classroom because it does not have long-term science behind it yet. Like, it really doesn't. And I have multiple friends and multiple people that I'm happy to provide resources to that haven't shut down from, like, their voices, even though they're highly respected for years. Like, they haven't shut down from their voices being heard, too. Like, if they're ringing alarms right now, they're like being silenced. Not okay. So, I understand that everybody is fearful. I understand, I lost my dad, I understand death. Like, I understand all of that. But what needs to happen is the people in the classroom get to deal with their own emotions, so they're not projecting that onto our children. Thank you.
One last, one last speaker.
My name's Jennifer Kidwell. I have been here in Kentucky for 23 years. I have had, I have two grown children that went through Hardin County, and I have two more in Hardin County now. I do, I'm also an RN. I've worked in the medical field for over 25 years, and I am against the mask mandate as well. But I brought you guys some literature. This is not off Facebook. This is out of the New England Journal of Medicine. Highly respected. I don't know why, because I've read some stuff on there that I throw in the trash, honestly, but this is good. This was a good study, and I think that, I'm going to leave this with you, so you can read it, please. Because this is from December 17, 2020, volume 383, number 25. Okay, this is SARS-CoV-2 transmission among Marine recruits during quarantine. So, this took two separate recruits, two separate barracks, basically, is what they did. One of them was masked, and they were quarantined, they were, did social distancing, and the other one did not. And you know what? There was no difference in the rate of COVID between the two. And you know, these are Marines. They're not going to sneak out because they're going to get, you know what? So, I believe this. Now, I've been masked, I've done through, gone through all of the protocols for tuberculosis. I've had N95 masks actually fitted to my face so that it would actually work. So anybody who goes out and buys an N95 mask, unless it's fitted to you, it's not going to work. This is useless. But what it is good for is trapping your bacteria so you can re-inhale it. Everybody has bacteria. It's floating through the air. Like, sir, you have these little spots right here on the side of your mask? Bacteria gets in there. Who knows where it came from? And like this, another gentleman said, the, they're finding now that it's not just droplet, it's aerosol. So, I do want to bring that up. Another thing I wanted to point out, what that lady just said before me, is health. Why aren't we teaching our children health? Why aren't we teaching them? I have this for you guys as well. Vitamin D is found to be one of the biggest things to help prevent COVID. One of the biggest vitamins. Are our children getting enough vitamins? If anybody needs help getting any, I'll help. I will pay to help anybody who needs it get these vitamins to their children or the adults. This is going to help you guys, too. I want to help people. That's why I'm a nurse. This is not helping. And look what it's doing to them. Look what it's doing to their mind. That's not right, to fear the world. Everybody's scared, but you know what? It's fear-mongering. It really is. And I'm bringing these things to you, and there's plenty more. If, if you want more, all you have to do is call me. These are for you, and I hope that you would hear us and know that, no, we're not just making this up. The people that are making this real know, and the ones that know the truth are being silenced.
Thank you all. Next, we have construction updates. At our noon board meeting today, we got some updates from our architect and construction managers. Biggest issue, obviously, being with East Hardin Middle School. It is moving along, we are making progress. Hope, hope that we can make the move sooner rather than later, but we're still not at a point that we can say when that's going to happen. There has been some progress, and there's, there's been a lot of, I guess, kind of tough talks and getting, getting pretty stern as everyone has been not pleased necessarily with, with the way things have gone and how long things have gone on and so on and so forth. So hopefully, that's going to be wrapped up soon. We're starting to see a little bit of the start at Central Hardin and be, be working on that and looking to see how that goes. John, do you have anything else you want to add with that?
I think I have a couple.
All right. And along with the Central Hardin thing, it's going to be very important throughout this year and next that everybody's just very aware and paying attention of all the construction that is, is going on and, and everything is going to take place. Everybody's doing their best to keep it from affecting the flow of things as much as possible, but there's, there's going to be construction going on, so there will be some things that everybody needs to watch out for. Moving on to the consent agenda. We're approving a modified schedule for students with a disability, approval of the HCECTV contract for production services with Brannenberg Telecom for live sports coverage. We received the annual data security report. We have approval for the Central Hardin High School JROTC Raider Team to travel to Molina, We've received the monthly financial reports and school activity reports and such. We are also approving a BG1 for the Woodland Elementary HVAC Project, doing some repairs and upgrades there. Approval of the local planning committee, community members. We're, it's time to start that up again, although almost seems like it's never ended, but time to get that going again, and so we need three community members for that that we are, are approving. Chip Sutherland is here. Chip, you've got some information for us tonight?
Chip Sutherland at Baird. Worked, served as your municipal advisor on the bond issues, and just wanted to give you a very, very brief update. John and I had spoke, and we've sold some new money bonds to fund construction. We've refinanced debt to save interest on the bond issue for the school district, and I, and I wanted, wanted you all to kind of know what the results of some of this stuff was. So there's, there's a smattering of information on here. The first thing that said, that I'm going to talk about is kind of the recent issuances that you've had over the last several years. Whenever, it's an important reminder for the board, the tax dollars that come here, Kentucky revised statutes requires that certain portion of those funds are restricted for building projects only. And you can use it to pay cash for building projects, or you can put that towards borrowing money and pay for projects. So those are restricted funds. So as I'll mention later, you have bonding capacity, and that's our calculations based on those revenues that you all receive that are restricted for projects only. So, in the last several years, been, you know, we've been quite, quite a few new money issuances, which is exciting for new schools, new elementary schools, high school renovations, expansions, et cetera. So the most recent one, what we sold just back in August, I guess, first, last week, a $52 million issue, and interest rate was 2.1%. So, you borrowed money over a 20-year period, and the interest rate was 2.1%, and that's fixed. It just gives you a little context over the last several years. The next lowest one was about five years ago, and you had one at about 2.67% interest. So it's just kind of interesting, I think, as a board member to say, you know, hey, when we borrow money, what does it look like? And, and that kind of thing. So that's really all that's summarizing for you all. Happy to answer any questions about that kind of thing. The other thing was that there was an old bond issue, a 2013 bond issue, that as a district, you all authorized. John wanted to present you all a resolution. We did it, gosh, John, I can't remember now, but it was almost a year ago, nine months ago. We got authorization out of the way early in case interest rates dropped. And we, the interest rates did drop, and we finally took advantage of it and refinanced that debt. So you were paying about 4.1% on that particular bond issue. We refinanced it with new bonds down to 1.8%. So the annual savings for the district is $156,000 per year. So you'll pay $156,000 less in interest in, per year for the next, till, when was it, 2033? And that's a total of $1.8 million net of all costs that the school board's saving. So after all of that, the other good news report, while you all have done a lot of great things with projects, facilities constantly, constantly need investing, and you've got a facility plan, as you all have worked with your LPC over the years, to, to make sure that you, you invest in the facilities that you do have. So it's important to think about what, well, what's our capacity to address? This is what's behind us, but what's our capacity to address what's in front of us? And I'm not taking into account capital outlay here, but your, so your bonding capacity conservatively is right around $50 million as of today. So, it's a great report. You know, the other smart thing that, that the administration is doing is, when I tell you what you could, what you could borrow, we're holding back some of this in terms of cash because it's important to have cash to pay for things that you just don't want to borrow money for, like carpet improvements, roof improvements, things like that. So, yeah, Park High Schools is in great financial health, and just wanted to give you all summary on it. John, I leave anything out?
You did good, Chip.
Hey, man. All right. Thank you all.
Glad we finally pulled the trigger on that one.
Sorry?
Glad we finally pulled the trigger on that one.
Yeah, I mean, you know, rates might go down to zero tomorrow, but... Yeah, I mean, you know, rates might go down to zero tomorrow, but you know, you,
1.8 NPV, that's, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you all. Hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Chip. We appreciate it. We had the certified and classified personnel actions. We've got the SBDM minutes, the PAC information, approval of minutes from the, our board retreat, special meeting and other board meetings that have been held since our last meeting. And then approval of the recommended policy revisions concerning holiday and annual leave.
We accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then action items.
New business.
Oh, so, okay, sorry. No action items. We do have new business and this involves the approval of the signing of the inter-agency agreement between the Department of Juvenile Justice and the Harden County Board of Education acting for Harden County Day Treatment. This is something that we do every year.
It is.
Ms. Morgan, if you want to explain a little bit?
Yes, so we, we partner with the Department of Juvenile Justice to have several treatment centers and this was with a Harden County Day Treatment, which is utilized by multiple counties. It is not solely Harden County school students that attend there. You have Elizabeth Town Independent students that attend there and possibly students from other counties. You're going to notice with the exception of items Q, R, and S, and that is because that is a request to have access, full access to Infinite Campus. And because it would allow an outside agency to see information only for our county, we are requesting that you not approve those three components of this. But the rest of the contract is fine, as like you said, we do this yearly so that we can provide those services for students who may not be successful in a, a regular school program and are sometimes court ordered to attend Harden, the Harden County Day Treatment. So that is what that is.
So you need a motion to approve this with the exception of those exceptions? I'll make a motion. We approve the signing of the inter-agency agreement between the Department of Juvenile Justice and the Harden County Board of Education acting for Harden County Day Treatment with the exception of items Q, R, and S of the contract.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is our superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Sutton did a phenomenal job of bringing out the great things happening in Harden County. I have spoken with numerous parents over the last several months. And what I'm going to ask from the parents who are here and the parents who are viewing and the community members is to understand the difficult time that we as school districts across the state and nation are under, as well as many other agencies within our district and our state and our nation. And what I'm going to ask is that people, when you are working with our staff, our teachers, our custodians, our child nutrition workers, those working to try to get students in cars in the afternoon, out of cars in the morning. Anytime that you come in, we ask that you show grace and respect and understanding that some of the things they're being asked to do are not what they signed up for. I can assure you, when I took on the task of superintendent, this is not what I anticipated having to deal with. Yes, Chip, who comes in and tells us about bonds, trying to get schools open, trying to make sure we are meeting the needs of all of our students is what we are here for. We want 100% of our students to be successful. Our teachers work incredibly hard each and every day. All of our staff work incredibly hard. So when you come in contact with them, I hope that you will show appreciation. I hope that if you disagree with them, you will try to seek to understand first. And they have also been asked to do that, to listen and to seek to understand. So I just ask for those of you in attendance, those watching, that you take on that part of trying to ask questions before accusing or before not being as pleasant as what those people deserve. We want our staff to treat people with respect and dignity and I would ask that you do the same for them. So Ms. Sutton, at this time, I'm going to ask you to come up. She has a report that we probably should have heard earlier, but I'm going to ask her to give a report. This is a report on the district. Our board is to be kept up to date on what is happening. Ms. Sutton is going to share with you what we are seeing in the district as far as COVID. This is, the one person spoke about the form that we keep online. We will have that up and running for you on Monday. We needed some time to get students who had COVID over the summer, but it was not during the school year. And we are now at the point that we are seeing what's happening during the school year. So Ms. Sutton, I'm going to ask you to share that, please.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I just want to share that as we came into the 20, 21, 22 school year, we eagerly anticipate and all have the same goal, and that's in-person instruction for the entire school year. I know that those of us that are, our profession is education by trade, that when we went to college to be educators and so forth, that we know that we want our kids in school the entire school year. In an effort to do that, in the times that we were in, as the Director of Health and Family Services, we look to our health professionals in our area for those guidance. Additionally, we are, as Ms. Morgan shared, following guidelines that have been set out for us by our Kentucky Public Health. As those individuals have shared, about nine different strategies and I just want the board to know some differences that have come about. One, yes, the promotion of vaccinations is on there, as well as requiring masks. But one of the things on there in regards to contact tracing and quarantining that everyone needs to understand that a close contact, if a child or a staff member within Harden County Schools is quarantined, last year a close contact was defined as being closer than six feet for 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. An exception has been made to that if both parties, the positive case and the potential direct contact are both masked. It can be read in a document that's been shared with our Board of Education that those individuals will be exempt from being a direct contact if they are greater than three feet away, if both individuals are masked. We are basing all of our decisions on the guidance that we have been given through our Kentucky Department of Public Health, our CDC guidelines, and very importantly, our local doctors and physicians that we have consulted through Baptist Health Harden, the Lincoln Trail District Health Department. So I provided for you a dashboard. We're used to having that on the Harden County Schools and we have had a few parents, around 12 to 15 parents that have called and asked about that COVID dashboard. So last year, Department of Public Health required us to daily enter all cases and direct contacts that were reported. We, as a district, placed active cases on there. At the end of the school year, that mandate was suspended. We did continue it through our first session of our summer school through June. Parents have expressed, if you Google HCS COVID dashboard, that's what comes up. We do want you to know that that will be back up and going on Monday. As students came in, this is the first time we've started a school year with the contact tracing requirement and so forth. Please understand with contact tracing, the school district is completing 100% of that at this time due to the increase, increase in cases. And each of you can view the Lincoln Trail District Health Department map and see that that is increasing quite a bit each and every single day in our community. We're not talking about the nation. We're not talking about the state. We're talking about right here in Harden County.
Just a point of clarification there. So what, what you, what you're saying is that the school is doing contact tracing because the health department is doing it for places outside the school? We're having to do it because they can't or they're too busy or what is that? Is that what you mean?
Yes, sir. So the, our local health department, the Department of Public Health have been extremely supportive, giving us guidance, helping us, making sure we are following the guidelines that the Department of Public Health at the state level have given. But due to, yes, as you said, Mr. Seago, the amount of cases and how much they have gone up, they are only staff-wise able to follow the cases and so forth. We, as a school district, have been charged and you can see that on, on the chart. Not only am I, myself and one other person, spending lots of hours, but we are looking at our cases that are being reported, staff and student. Then we are looking at direct contacts, not just direct contacts that are resulting in our classrooms, our buses, the cafeteria and our sports events. But we are also charged by the local health department to contact trace household. So if an individual is a positive case within their household and they have an HCS staff member in that household or they have an HCS student, we are also charged with a tracking sheet. We are meticulously following the CDC guidelines for contact tracing. Day zero is an individual's last reported date of exposure to the positive case. We are following the quarantining to where you would be in for 10 days, have a 10-day quarantine and return on day 11 unless as a parent or a staff member, parent of a child or a staff member chooses to test on day five, six, or seven. That seven-day quarantine is the exception to the 10-day quarantine. And then you would return on day eight.
All that's CDC guidance?
Yes, sir. We follow CDC guidance.
So we report these numbers back to the health department then?
No. They are aware because we talk multiple times on a daily basis.
Where do the cases, do the cases come to us? The cases go to them? What's the flow there?
The flow of what happens, if you go to your medical provider and you are COVID tested, that by statute, that medical provider is required within 24 hours to report that to the local public health authority. In this case, it's the Lincoln Trail District Health Department. They have 24 hours. Based upon the caseload that our Department of Public Health, local Lincoln Trail, is facing right now, they are not contacting people, they're not able to contact people in a one or two-day turnaround. It's more like seven or eight-day turnaround. So that has become, it's hard on folks because they want to know when they can get back in and so forth, but the health department's doing all they can and so forth. I provided the numbers with you. We did the first five days of school. I know this is day six. Actively working all of the contact tracing that was happening today as well as positive cases, parents and staff members are reporting to us. As you can see there, since the beginning of school, which would have been Thursday, August the 12th, we have had a total of 14 staff cases, 76 student cases. I did place the caveat down there that 13 of those 76 students did not attend school. It was the first day of school and I assumed that they were sick or for whatever reason were testing and so forth, got COVID tested. So 13 of those, but we felt in order to be very honest and very transparent that while those students had not stepped foot on our campuses, they are our children. So we reported those. In regards to direct contacts, for the first five days, there were 135 direct contacts that were in the building, but we're also contact tracing 136 household and non-household total. Non-household includes events where parents might have taken their children or staff might have gone to, say, a family gathering, a birthday party and some things like that. And then you see staff direct contacts. There were a total potentially of 20, but 10 that were vaccinated or exempt. According to the regulation, if you are vaccinate, fully vaccinated, and that means 14 days past your last dose of your vaccination, whether you chose a two-dose or a one-dose vaccination, if you're 14 days past, then you're exempt from quarantining. Additionally, if you have had a positive case of COVID documented with a lab confirmed test result, you are also exempt, within the past 90 days, you're exempt from quarantining.
Have any other questions?
Ms. Sutton, do you mind to explain contact of a contact? I think that's one of the questions families have had.
Absolutely. So you're considered a contact, a direct contact slash close contact is the verbiage that you will see used in some of the documents. Close contact or direct contact, if you are closer than six feet for longer than 15 minutes. However, if I, I'm going to use an example as best to explain. If the positive case is Mary, my sister that is in my home. If Mary's a positive case and I'm her direct contact, I'm a direct contact. But if in the classroom or whatever, I had, so they call the school and they let everyone know that Mary, my parents let the school administration know that my sister Mary is positive, Janaye needs to come, sign out, she's been deemed as a direct contact. The students or the staff members that I would have come in contact with closer than the six feet, longer than 15 minutes, are not also going to be considered direct contacts. They are merely contact of a contact. And I know that is sometimes confusing for folks, but that is how that can be explained.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always good to see interest and involvement regardless of what circumstances are. So we, we do appreciate that. I also appreciate everyone being respectful and orderly. I'm sure people have seen incidents recently where that has not been the case and so we, we do greatly appreciate that.
Motion, do you make a motion to adjourn? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All those in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries.